Heavenly Father, again, we thank you for this day and we thank you for your many, many blessings. And Lord, I just thank you that no one got hurt in our area with this flooding. I just thank you for being with all the kids, all the people that was out on the highways. And Lord, those who were stranded, I just thank you for being with them. Now we'll be with our employees and just watch over them, be with our first responders and protect them. We give you the glory of Jesus.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jason's on Zoom, Dutch is here. And calling me to order, there's certainly one thing on the agenda to be done, correct?
Correct.
Okay, new business, discuss the funding. This, what do we need to discuss?
Okay, so just a quick rundown, as you all are aware, we had a flood last week, on Tuesday. And fortunately, we did fare relatively well as far as peoples. We only, I think, had two residents that had any main living floor damage. And both of those residents do have flood insurance. What we're running into is the majority of the affected residents, even basements. If you have standard homeowners insurance, it does not cover outside water, period, end of story. They just tell you, good luck. So, the majority of the residents who are affected were within the floodplain and did have flood insurance. However, I don't want to say there's a small number, but there is a number of residents who did not have flood insurance, who had substantial damage to their basements. We have been working with West Virginia volunteer organizations, active in disaster, and coordinating response to those areas. We do not look to receive a federal declaration, a Stafford Act declaration, which would give funding to these people. So, there's just, there's no help available for them. So, the volunteer organizations are helping them out. We've been putting that information out there on how to do it. For anyone who's wondering, you just go to mineraldisaster.com, you do the survey one, two, three. It automatically goes to the state emergency management division and populates a list, which also goes to volunteer organizations active in disaster. And then assistance can be assigned from there, and then they send us these county summaries that show that we need to tell them. When the Southern Baptist stopped in last week, which is one of the organizations that will soon be active in the area. They're setting up their incident command post Wednesday. They will soon be active in the area. They're going to help with a lot of muck out, spray out, those kinds of things that people need. They don't necessarily rebuild, but they can certainly help people with clean out. One of the first things they said is we do not do debris removal. So, as they help people muck out, all of that stuff has to have a place to go. They already have a list of people they'll be going to. I think there's only, there's only a couple. However, we just, we put out the survey one, two, three information on Wednesday of last week, but we put it out in a much more clear, this is what you need to do format again on Friday. So, we have had some more responses, and I'm sure Boad is going through those. Right now, there are only four pending requests. But we have had people who aren't necessarily requesting help from someone else to muck it out, but don't really have the resources to go to the landfill or a pickup truck or frankly, the money to pay. So, we have had several people reach out and ask if there's anything we can do to help with that. So, when we talked last week, we thought the best way to handle it would just be to get like four construction dumpsters and centrally place those so that people can just put the stuff they need to in there. And then there's people who don't have the resources to get it there. I do feel strongly, and we have not checked with them yet, because I want to make sure the dumpsters were happening. But I do feel strongly, the city of Kaiser is always willing to support their people. And I know Piedmont has some public works people as well. I do feel like they'd be willing to use the dumpster trucks to at least haul that stuff from people's houses to that dumpster for people who aren't capable of doing it. Again, speaking for them, but based on my experience with them, both of those towns, I don't think it was a problem. And I, I feel very strongly that Kaiser won't, they're always very good about helping us with those kinds of things. So, basically, the first thing we want to talk about today was funding for four dumpsters. Initially, I thought, put one on Willow Avenue, one on Water Street, one at the BFW in Fort Ashby. But what I'm thinking now is actually the majority of people who don't have flood insurance are on the west end and at, in the airport. So, I think maybe putting it at like Church McKeever or the old Armory would be a better location. Again, we'd have Tetris coming state, but I feel sure it won't be a problem. So, people with flood insurance, they just file a claim and you can pay a company to come do all this work. It's people without flood insurance who are going to struggle because they've got all the financial obligation to take care of it. So, basically, what we want to do is just ask for four dumpsters, but we'll also need to dump those dumpsters and bring them back. I think we could probably, if we could get them sometime this week, and I think if we left them out for like seven to 10 days, at least give it all of this week, this weekend, and a portion next week, I think that'd be a fair amount of time for people to get stuff out, but I absolutely want to give people a weekend because um, as big of construction dumpsters as we can get, because there's going to be some, like the one of the pictures someone I went to school with sent me when she was asking for help. She's got like furniture, like full size furniture in Cawreyland. So, they're going to have to be pretty substantial. Now, I know Dutch had spoken someone, so I'll let you talk about that.
I talked to Nolly Mountain Holland, who I talked to. He wasn't sure how many dumpsters he'd get, I think when he was in the plan, what'd he say, two or three? And he was willing to offer up the labor for free, or which is basically your flat cost for renting the dumpster. Uh, he didn't say what size he would have available, but I'm sure he understands. We want the biggest one we can get, so. He was willing to, to cover the labor and hauling and stuff like that. Uh, if we can cover the landfill cost, which you get a full dumpster like that, you're probably looking about seven or eight hundred dollars for landfill. Depends on, just depending on what goes in there and how heavy it is. Flood and stuff's going to be wet and damp, and some of them might be getting dried out now, but be, be getting wet and that adds to your weight, unfortunately. I would, I would suggest, I would figure somewhere around seven or eight hundred dollars for the dump each one of these dumpsters as a rough an idea, and that's based on what I've done with them. And when we went, rented the one in Pennsylvania here a month ago, the only thing we had to do is pay for the dumpster. That took care of it, the dumping, we didn't have to pay no landfill. Of course, the dumpster was around five hundred and some dollars.
That's, yeah, because here, we pay, like when we were doing construction here, we paid to rent the dumpster and we paid landfill, but the dumpster rental was like a hundred bucks.
Yeah, that's, okay.
So, that's, I'm sure it's just because you paid more for the dumpster.
Yeah. You don't know what the dumpsters price are?
Well, that's what he thinks, that the guy he spoke to, she did reach out to waste management, but you didn't hear back?
Cody reached out for me, I had a bunch of calls to make, so she reached out on Friday, but she said they were having problems with their phone and did not get back with them. She left a call back message for them to call us back.
So, but Dutch reached out to his guy and he said they would give us the dumpsters, we just pay the landfill costs. I mean, I think that's definitely the best way to do it.
Yeah, but he did ask, you know, if anything down the road would happen where we would have money or state money or something like that, that, you know, we give, we give some money to him to cover some of that labor and stuff like that.
And I don't even think it's unfair to pay him for dumpster rental. I just, or even if he just charged us cost for the hauling and stuff, I don't think any of that would be unfair, but that's. So, if you all, we needed to have meetings, we, I mean, if you all say no, we're not going to do anything, then that's what we're doing, but we need to help.
Need to help.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I do, I, the cities, neither of the cities that had effects have any money. Like Kaiser originally don't have, I mean Kaiser and Piedmont, Piedmont definitely doesn't have money to help. I mean, an eight hundred dollar dumpster bill for their whole budget off. That's where some of the calls have come from. I think we have, we only have, well, we just have one in Piedmont right now, but it's not even the person who's been asking. Um, because actually Rick called me, Rick Hillenbrand called me on Friday morning, and it was because of people in Piedmont reaching out to him.
Surely in town, the city of Blue, city all there would help with employees on like
Oh, I def- I definitely think both places would be willing to do that. I don't think that'll be an issue, and I feel very sure that Kaiser will do that. Based on my experiences with them, again, promising something on their behalf, but I've never, ever had them not be willing to do that kind of thing, for sure.
Are you worried about regulating?
That's, that's the other side of it, yeah.
So, I, I've been thinking about that this weekend. And unfortunately, the, I don't know how we would regulate it, because short of putting someone there with it, and illegal dumping is cheaper than a monitor. Yeah, exactly, so if we pay people to be there all the time, you're going to have way more money into it than if someone just abuses it. No, you're right, that is something, when I was talking about it this weekend, my family, that was one of the first things I said, like, are you going to have a monitor there? But then, like I, it'll be cheaper for people to illegally dump.
These ones, I don't know about Fort Ashby area, but these ones here, guys, are couldn't we say, one of them over here on the police station would maybe deter people from just dumping anything in it?
Well, we could, and I also thought about like fairgrounds, it's gated, we could put someone there for eight hours a day. Um, but it has to be in the evenings, like I can't expect people to
Or even if we were to put it someplace that had a security camera.
Yeah.
Then that would be, like, you know, like Church McKeever or the old armory, I'm sure they probably have security cameras up there. There's a big flagrant use of, uh, use of the dumpster, we could Of course, most people probably have trucks picked up around in that, in, I'd say, majority of them. How much money you think we ought to put out?
I don't really have a good number, but if Dutch is thinking eight hundred dollars per dump, I would imagine that one or, it, it also depends on the size, but I would think all of them will obviously need to be dumped once, but I could imagine that some of these in town might need to be dumped twice. So, sixteen, thirty-two, then ten thousand, what I throw out.
Unless you get a big dumpster, them little ones don't hold. Because they wouldn't hold, nowhere near everything that I've had.
Well, we need one at least the size that we have down at the boardhouse right now for the construction.
Remember? I seen one sitting, one I come in, I seen Nolly Mountain Holland have one sitting in the BFW parking lot. Wow, did the city put that one there, or I seen they had some equipment there too, but that was all.
It's probably, uh, Chad anyone, uh, because he's doing that building.
We're having a lot of building. Oh, did he buy it?
Right here. Yeah, good. All right. That's what we just need to do, that one, the dumpster, that's the first thing we need to do, is how much. I'm good with ten grand, what do you think, Jason?
I was thinking the same number, ten grand. Um, you can also put one there by the sheriff's office, couldn't you, in that side parking lot? Then they, they can monitor that one.
Yeah, um, the only problem there is we already don't have enough parking.
No, I'm talking, I think something else between Sheriff's Park and Water Street.
Water Street, yeah.
If you put it on the grass.
Oh, we, we could ask the city, that's the city's law, we could ask them, they probably let us put it there.
You can put it there on the grass.
Yeah.
There, Sheriff's Park, we
Uh, the only thing I'd be worried about that grass, since uh, it's wet.
Well, you could, you could leave the truck set on the, but I'm talking about
People are going to be going up to it to dump, you know.
Well, they would be doing that, yeah.
But the city would probably let us use, that's the city's law there on the corner, they'd probably let us use that. That wouldn't be the idea.
It would be, but they'd pull in.
Yeah.
More room and everything. Now, if it goes over this, they'll watch your spending.
If it goes over this, we'll come back, I'm not going to, and that, that's why we didn't order the dumpsters on Friday. I'm not going to spend this kind of money without asking.
Uh, yeah, I, I, ten, ten thousand dollars, people are dumping.
Yes. And especially if there's no dumpster, yes, but, I mean, if you want to charge us for fuel, it gets later.
Now, do this. Caution, but no tires.
Yeah.
You're not, tires is, is out. Because you can get rid of tires for it.
Well, that's what, hopefully people run tires in their basement.
Well, you don't know.
Yeah, no, I know.
Because I'm not paying for tire disposal when you can get rid of them for it.
That, well, and you know, period, that is one of the problems that's going to be with the dumpsters is hazardous materials, tires, all of that crap that people throw in if no one's watching. But, I don't, it's not like we have a ton of extra manpower to assign to it.
So, we keep just, uh, it sounds simple, but just put a piece of paper, take a piece of paper to the dumpster saying under video surveillance.
Oh, yeah.
Now, unless the items that cannot
Yeah, no, no hazardous material, no tires.
Yeah, we can be sure of that, for sure.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Guess we'll make that into a formal motion.
I will make a motion that we, um, budget up to ten thousand dollars for dumpsters to pay landfill fees and possibly dumpster and all work, cost of getting dumpsters here.
A second, uh.
No, I agree with that, I'll take it.
Oh, now, do you want, uh, I can look under the line, I need to see if we have a separate department just for disasters, or I could just put it under OEM section?
What we were doing during COVID is using the, um, civil defense line. So, that we could track separately. You had already activated it for COVID, do you want to put it over there?
Well, we'd have to set it up under general county, because that's set up under two oh seven COVID.
No, I thought the CARES funding, like when we bought PPE and stuff, you were doing it under O O one.
Sure.
It's not, just put it under emergency services.
They set up, they set up a separate one just for COVID though.
But it was, we were using general county funds and being reimbursed. It was before ARPA. Yeah, but I don't care, OEM or civil defense, but civil defense, I already
Two oh six, two oh six was COVID, two oh seven's ARPA.
Okay.
So, there's a separate fund for COVID too.
Okay. Well, whatever, it didn't mean either ways, as long as it's fine with them. Um, just as an FYI, the sheriff's office will have a little bit of overtime. I did tell Dutch last week, but Tuesday, um, they had to call out guys to help with evacuation. Um, I didn't ask, but it was, it wasn't one of those situations where we had time to ask. Um, Kaiser PD also had to call out extra guys on overtime so we could get people out. Um, and there was a lot of things to handle. On Wednesday, because of the expected storms, I spoke to National Weather Service every hour. We're possibly expecting more flooding, flooding Wednesday afternoon. And I did ask the sheriff's office, again, to have a few extra deputies, because one of the things that slowed down evacuation was trying to get deputies in. So, they did have three or four extra deputies out on Wednesday. I spoke to the sheriff about that, um, and they went ahead and called them out. So, there, there will be overtime for those two days, and that's completely on me. I put it in the incident log, I did let Dutch know, but it was also one of those things where if, if we needed to evacuate people again, and we were waiting for deputies again, that's, that, that, we knew this. We didn't know the first one was coming, but the second one, Kaiser PD also had people out.
I made a call about yesterday, but there was a few that I just didn't call for that.
Of course.
That wasn't a little incident.
How many people were in the shelter, uh, not employees, but actual like residents?
At Pete, we had seven. Yeah.
Oh.
So, let's talk about other employee overtime. So, Cody managed the shelter. Surprisingly, two or three weeks ago, we just had training to train maintenance on how to operate a shelter. Um, Cody, Todd, and Isaiah worked the shelter, and then Red Cross came and did the night shift. Cody is fine with comp time, she prefers time off to money. Isaiah would prefer to be paid overtime, and my guess is Todd would as well. Again, this is something that we
Not a normal thing.
It's not a normal thing, but we needed the shelter.
I'm good with that, yeah.
Okay, and then last one, Eileen worked sixty hours last week. She usually does comp time. However, it's, however, um, her presence was absolutely necessary, especially since Miss Rachel was laying on the beach last week while we were, um, making beaches.
Was it cloudy there all the time? You don't have a nice tan or nothing?
It was, I got tanned. It was quite sunny. Or I am, I am red, or I am this wonderful porcelain white.
So, for me, when it comes to this, I don't care, it's definitely an expectation of my job. I worked well over fifty hours last week, and that was by Thursday. And Friday, I was supposed to be off and ended up on the phone, probably three hours of it, but that's not a big deal. But Eileen would not normally need to work that much overtime, but because Rachel was gone, we just simply didn't have enough people to split amongst the load. And I would, just for last week, this week, we can get your things back, and so what I would like, we need to be able to pay her overtime just for that one. How many hours did you have exactly? It's in your calendar at the office.
Yeah.
Can I put it, can I put in overtime too?
Sure.
You're there.
Um, but I would like to be able to pay Eileen, but that's all your guys' choice. But it, because I don't think it's fair to ask her to work, like she was there until ten o'clock for two of the nights, and then she came in on Friday on her day off, and, um, I don't think it's fair to ask her to take all of that time off when you've got stuff going on.
It was a unique situation, something we haven't had, and I'm okay with it, as long as the others are, yeah. Jason, how do you feel about that?
I'm okay with it, I just want to say thank you to Luke and Eileen and Dutch and first responders, the law enforcement, the parks and tracks and everybody who was involved. You guys really stepped up and represented general county well, so thank you guys so much.
I do think everything went about as well as it could have. Um, that was, I mean, it was pretty mild compared to what it could have been, especially considering what our neighboring county saw. But I do think everything went well, all of our first responders came together really well. We were able to interface with the sheriff's office, um, very easily and Kaiser Fire Department. And there was a lot going on at times, but we were all able to, to make everything work. And I think everyone, it went way better than any exercise we've ever had, which is what we hoped for. Because our exercises sometimes, the interface and stuff is a struggle, because everyone's got different ideas. And I'll be honest, I, I'm sure Rachel and Eileen have heard me rant, but that's something I've always been worried about for a real event. It's like everyone's got their own ideas, they're going to do their own thing, but everyone stayed within. We had discussions, conference calls, like when we decided to evacuate Water Street, we had a pre-signed plan that we did years ago with the city that said we didn't even have to have their authorization. Um, so I spoke to Mike Cannon and JJ, and we all just kind of agreed at the point. We called for the evacuation, everything went, went extremely well considering the circumstances. And, uh, no one, no one was out there running Free Bird on account of four kind of thing, which is something we always worried about, but everything went well. Um, we had, the biggest problem was stony run, um, and Dutch was able to get with DOH, get some of that corrected. And while, while we're here, what did, uh, soil conservation say?
Yeah, so we got to with the soil con- conculations, it says Steve, uh,
Starcher.
Starcher. Steve Starcher. Uh, so you and Luke were up there, met with him Friday morning, was that Friday morning?
That's right, no, it was Thursday morning.
Thursday morning. And then Thursday morning, he agreed that the creek bed is, is full enough that it needs to be cleaned out. Uh, he's concerned about the DOH, uh, bond cover they have, which I told him, you know, if he can work with DOH to get that cleaned out, well, that would be a big plus. If not, then I'll, I'll try to pull some, pull it somewhere. Um, so he had to go to his supervisor and talk to him. Uh, when I talked to him, he did call me Friday and told me that since he met with me, he got a call about several other streams. So, they're trying to put it all into one contract. Uh, so they, once they make the determination, and I guess have a rough day, uh, idea of an hour to clean up, that they'll put it out for contract, and then when they put that out, contract a little bid on amount per hour. Um, and then whoever's slowest bidder gets it, and then go around and get cleaned up. Now, he seemed to think, once they put the contract out, it gets boarded really quick. And he originally told me, like middle of this week, they would be able to clean out Stoney Creek. But, uh, with the other river streams coming into play too, it might take a little longer, but still. So, just as long as we have a game plan, we get somebody up there. Because I actually didn't expect to have somebody to be able to clean it out till middle of summer, to be honest. But they're, they want to move pretty quick on it and get that, get that cleaned out. I kind of talked to him about the yards and stuff that was there and all the river rock that got washed into people's yards. He said they don't do that, they just mainly take care of the bed. In fact, the big pile of rocks that, that DOH put alongside of the stream, he said they wouldn't even touch that. However, they got to get, they got to move it to get it out of there. He said he would work, drive, work with a contractor to make that part of the hourly thing to maybe get that cleaned up there. And that is the worst, where it first come out, that stretch of road, uh, that, you know, that, yeah, that stretch of, uh, land and the, um, road that goes up the old B and B concrete, that's, that's the worst. Uh, a lot of, lot of rock and stuff in there, so hopefully they get that cleaned up. Um, but we're still waiting on the, what they're going to do, how soon they're going to get there.
Anybody needs river rock for their yard, it's all alongside the rock, it's all everywhere.
Yeah, also, something I need to, I don't think I talked to you about this. They do, he was asking about someplace to dump that, that's out of the flood zone, all that river rock. And I did tell him up the sheriff's building, is the place I have right now, if one less, we can think of someplace else. But, um, I hope that's okay, that they can take it up there and dump it.
I don't know, I don't know, they don't have any other places in the county, I mean
Yeah, and I figure they, they dump it up there, then we can push it off or something, or, you know, um.
And it's not that much, it's not like in the health department, the
No. No, no, it's not going to be a hundred and eighty truckloads and tractolates, it's, it's going to be, uh, there's probably, there's probably seven or eight up there. Uh, I figure they'll probably have seven or eight tractals, tractolates, but, so.
Um, last thing, and this isn't an action item for today, but this is something for you all to think about. Um, this event did make me think about our tracking mechanisms for overtime salaries, that kind of thing. And I do think for the future, and maybe this would be a good reason to get civil defense set up back under O O one again. If we had a line set up for all of these, and you guys put, let's just say, every year, ten or twenty thousand dollars into civil defense, if we were able to take like the sheriff's office overtime out of that overtime budget and all of those, that way, if we ever do have a Stafford Act declaration, it's all in the same place on the books. Because like all that law enforcement, again, not going to be a Stafford Act, I say that, should not be a Stafford Act declaration. So, it's just going to come out of law enforcement, but if we had a line set up, and that will just tell law enforcement, all of this overtime, you need to do a separate voucher, and it needs to come out of the civil defense line. That way, when push comes to shove, and we're doing the tracking for reimbursement, it's all in one place, and Lauren can real literally run me a ledger, and we have all the information we need. So, not a decision for today, I think we
I mean, if you want it set up for this event, I mean, they're still planning.
I think maybe we should, because then for the future, we'll just have it. Because I don't, I keep saying civil defense, because I don't know a better place to take it out of. Because emergency services will just get confusing too, if we, since it already has recurring expenses.
You don't think the state would help kick in on anything?
It's a possibility, so if we go ahead and separate it now, like
We can talk to them, but when we, when I keep talking, they keep saying, just go to Boad. And like they're assigning people to Catholic charities for financial assistance.
And Doug, because Doug worked too.
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, Doug had four and a half hours.
Instrumental in evacuation.
He is fine with taking it off, though, he's another one that's not necessarily, I guess I should ask him to confirm, but he usually doesn't mind taking it off, he likes time off more than he doesn't, well, he likes money for sure, but it's not the same situation.
One more thing to discuss, the back of the election shed didn't get watered in it.
No, machines got hurt too.
No, because luckily, we did have law enforcement, uh, standing right there, and a young man that I literally grabbed his arm and said, can you help us? And he jumped, and he said, other than where did I put my cell phone? We put his cell phone high and dry, and then he helped carry the machines out. Um, we got everything out of the, with the machines out of the building, the printer out of the building. Uh, they brought the Humvee over, put the printer in. Then we had to move the stuff in the record shed up, off of the floor, but it never got inside the record shed. But it was probably a couple inches in the election shed, so.
Would it be too much of a pain to move that like up to the storage building or somewhere like that?
It's not very convenient for me to walk over to.
Well, I know that it's not on the floodplain either, like I don't know where else we'd find it.
Yeah, so I was just trying to There are cameras on it though.
Well, it's got cameras built in.
Well, thirty years.
And we, we have no internet.
Actually, I think it just backed up, I think the water just backed up because as fast as it came up.
We could tell the water turned around. Might be able to set it up right there. You think?
I'll take up a bunch of
We'll get, huh?
We'll take up a bunch of
It'll add to part, it's, it's six to one and a half dozen to the other.
You're right.
I mean, I don't care if it's a ten or twenty building here or over here, it's going to take away from one place and add to the other.
Yeah.
That's the way that works. It's going to be the voting machines up into the
Yard.
Okay. Oh, upstairs.
The voting machines are upstairs now.
Oh, they are?
Took tack of the
Good, okay.
So we may have, but, but if you need a dry building, when that bar building is. Yeah, the bar building gets tore down, we could. The one where uh.
You want that in your front?
I say, when it gets tore out, could you, or they're placed there, set one in the building, you can set closure.
In front of your buildings though, I mean, but there was, the idea is they're behind.
Looked around at the city of Kaiser, really?
Well, we're trying to do this improvement project, we don't wanna.
I know, I know what you mean, but.
There's no issue where it's at. Just, you know, just having everything up off the floor.
Till we have another.
Which I had, some of the stuff was either up on skids, but with everything going over the past couple of years, not everything was up.
Are those buildings anchored?
No.
That would have been fun. Like the metal container. I didn't even see that, I was very busy moving stuff. Did you see the container roof? Like, no, I didn't even see the.
Well, the flood maps have moved, but all those buildings should technically be anchored, because they'd be, that wasn't a, that was nowhere near a hundred year flood. That's what we asked statistically what they thought that was, and. If we had a hundred year flood, those buildings are gonna become a major issue. Actually, it'll probably cause damage to the sheriff's office, cause they're gonna float into it. So we should look at anchoring those. If they're gonna stay there. Anyways, yeah, if we can set up civil defense, I don't know that I'll think that out, but that would help us track it just for the future.
I did take pictures of the shed in too.
Okay, is, do you think the floors were rotten or anything because of it?
I don't know, I got my boots on today, I'm going over and then get out today, so. We moved the stuff from the record shed up into my office, so I can move the stuff from the election shed over to get the floor dry in the election shed.
And we did lose Cruiser. The motor locked up and the box trailer got water. You filed claims on those last week, did you?
The Cruiser, not the box trailer. No one sent me anything for that.
We need to ask them, cause that's silly to not claim that it's insured, you know, I mean, it got a foot of, it had got a foot of water into it. I did ask.
Came up so fast, we couldn't get there.
Oh, no, no, but I'm saying we have insurance.
Would have moved it had we.
Yeah.
We, we couldn't have gotten ready to move too bad.
Well, I saw one of the pictures somebody posted and I was so freaking mad, cause that Ram twenty five hundred got left sitting in the water, like that is a brand new pickup. We're taking pictures of it sitting in the water. It got right below it apparently. It, it didn't get in it, but I was so mad, someone showed me pictures, why would someone have not moved that Ram? I was taking pictures of it. Uh, no, it stayed right below it, but, oh, I'm so mad.
Well, we have, um, will you schedule like a debris briefing time? So that we can plan all this stuff out for the future, what worked, didn't work. Um, need to be thinking of this.
We already, we have it on our Trello board to schedule a hot wash, um. I'm thinking it'll probably be next week, um, or the week after, after we get through the debris management section and all that kind of stuff. So that it can all actually be over, um, but yes, we absolutely have on the Trello board to have a hot wash with the first responders and stuff too. Because I'd be curi-, we've heard from a couple of them, but I would be curious to hear from everyone what they felt like could have been done better and. Some things like that. I know on the day of, someone was like yelling on the radio, this needs to be a mandatory evacuation. We cannot legally, mandatorily evacuate anybody. You have individual property rights, we cannot force you. To leave your home unless, you know, you're under arrest, but. So all evacuations that we order are always going to be voluntary and that's, even in coastal cities and towns, they're voluntary. That's how they end up with so many water rescues after. So we work for zero injuries and one water rescue, so.
Okay, I'd like to be a part of that whenever you uh, schedule that.
Yes, for sure, for sure.
Thank you.
Something else, Jason, I wanna mention, since I'm on the LEPC. Uh, we do have require, or we do have responsibilities as commissioners. And next time there's a tabletop session, I'd like for all of us to be involved in that. Even to observe so that we kinda get a better idea of what our responsibilities are and what we need to do, that kind of thing, so.
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
Yeah, I, I'll admit, I was kinda lost what to do up there and I just took phone calls and answered messages and. So that helped out evidently and, and, but still, to sit there some, the times where like I was twiddling my thumbs and worried about everything. I didn't know, I didn't like that so much, but.
Well, and it would be helpful if, um. We did a resolution or something that said, once a local disaster has been declared, that. A single commissioner is allowed to make decisions on behalf of the body, like small decisions, cause there's. Oh, it was not realistic for us to be calling all three of you to try to get things done. And ultimately though, and this is something, it's on the white papers that Rachel didn't, we gave to you all. Every decision I made is actually your all's decision, um, you are just delegating the responsibility and authority to me. Um, and that's in the emergency services code, but every decision I make is your all's decision, technically and legally. Um, and you are the party that's legally responsible, um, so having a commissioner at the EOC is certainly helpful having. Multiple, we do have that small conference room that if all of you wanted to be there or even two of you. That we could put you in outside of the EOC or even sit in the EOC, cause every decision we make is absolutely your. Decision and your responsibility. Now, I like to think I make pretty decent decisions and you can trust me to make those, but. It still doesn't hurt for you to at least know what's going on, so you're like, Luke, you need to stop that right now.
No, I agree. You did a great job. We really appreciate you.
Yeah, and um, dispatch did a fantastic job. They were slam. They had a hundred and eighty-six incidents, um. A hundred and eleven nine one one calls, well over two hundred admin calls. My dispatchers worked because we could not get relief into them, lo-, most of them were there from four thirty AM until after eight o'clock that night. And some of them had to be in the next morning and they were there and they were there on time the next morning. We had to send um, natural resource police up through Alph garden to get one of our dispatchers from Bloomington. So we could relieve some of them so they could come back the next day, but um, our dispatchers did a phenomenal job, um. And they, they really, they couldn't even get up to pee, the phone would not stop ringing. And our sheriff's office did a fantastic job. I'm just thinking of the agencies that the commission's kind of got responsibility and funding and. The sheriff's office, we couldn't have asked for them to be any better. I wish they could have got people together quicker for the evacuation, but they can't help it, everybody doesn't live in house. They were doing everything they could and they really did fantastic, keeping us in the loop. The sheriff came up. Um, and worked the EOC with us, it was, it was really a good effort and all of our first responders did. Fantastic, all the fire departments and I truly, I could not, we could not aspire to come better. It was, um. It was a great exercise and hopefully we can get these people who don't have insurance. A little bit of help to help make things easier, cause we know nothing's cheap these days. So, that's all we've got.
Okay. Now, I will, um, get ahold of um, Buckle Zones, Nolly Mountain Halling. And see who he wants to get in contact with on his side to get these dumpsters up here. And he probably has a schedule or planner or whatever, so, and then I'll just let you know.
Well, that's what I was gonna sit down with you after this and look, see what we get set up and get the location set up, so if you all wanna turn, we're good.
Well, do we need to make a motion for the overtime?
Oh, yeah.
I'll make a motion to pay the overtime that you talked about.
I, I second that.
And can we go and take that out of civil defense then?
Go ahead, we list it separately.
Okay, um, can I tell the sheriff's office? Can I tell the sheriff's office to take theirs out of that too? Yeah, okay. Eileen, can you write that down?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second that.
Hey Liz, did you have any questions for us before I close out?
Uh, no questions, but as soon as you figure out where you're gonna have your dumpsters, if you'd let me know, I'll help you get that info out.
Yes, for sure. I will email that to you, um, as a press release, just as soon as we get those locations and time set up.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you, Liz.
Uh, y'all have a good day.